Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 23 legislative session of the Salisbury City Council. I'd like to welcome everybody, including some of our guests from across the sea. Welcome. At this time, please join me in a moment of silent meditation. Before we begin tonight, in case of an emergency, we ask that you leave the chamber in an orderly manner. When you exit the chamber, make a right-hand turn, go to the end of the hall and down the stairs. If for some reason that exit is blocked, please make a left-hand turn to the end of the hall and a right-hand turn, go all the way down the hall and go down the stairs. Please do not use the elevators if there is an emergency. If you need assistance, please ask, and it will be provided to you. Please rise now and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I'll call for a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
Still moved?
Second. Ms. Blake and Mr. Boda. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
Still moved?
Second.
Ms. Jackson and Mrs. Gregory. Good evening, Ms. Miller.
Good evening. So this is for the surplus request for the Mitchell Landing Apartments. The Department of Procurement received a request from city administration to declare city-owned real property as surplus for the purpose of a sale disposition. This property, located at 135 Mitchell Road and identified as Mitchell Landing Apartments, has a location map, S- sheet, and S- map attached. This 2.6 acre property currently has five buildings, four buildings which contain six apartments each, for a total of 24 apartments, and a management office, laundry room, and community room building. Each apartment building includes four three-bedroom units and two two-bedroom units. City administration has determined that it is in the best interest of the city to divest of its ownership and therefore offer this parcel to the public for sale and revitalization. Pursuant to Chapter 2.36 of the Salisbury, Maryland Code of Ordinances, city-owned real property must be deemed surplus by the Director of Procurement, who's then to make a recommendation to the City Council as to the sale or disposition of such real property. If approved by Council, the Department of Procurement shall then be directed to invite bids or proposals for development or prepare an advertisement for auction sale. The Department of Procurement does hereby request Council's approval to declare this parcel surplus and to allow the city to proceed with the disposition as noted.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I do.
Ms. Jackson?
Um, Jennifer, are there going to, has inspection been done? Are we going through with inspection of the remainder of the units?
If I can't answer that, I could direct that question to City Administrator Julia Glanz. Could you be able to answer that for Debbie Sam?
Debbie here. All of the units have been inspected. We are moving forward with an engineering proposal, and we're waiting to get that final document back. But we're moving forward as property owners to take care of all of the concerns that are on the table right now, as if we will have the property in perpetuity, as we are liable right now. So we want to make sure everybody is, you know, being taken care of and living in the best standard that they can. So we're going down two paths consecutively.
Okay, could I ask another question, Julia?
Yes.
Or Jennifer? I probably asked this question before, but I just want to reaffirm. When the owners, when whoever purchased this development, how are we going to go about keeping the people that are in there? Are they going to remain in those apartments? Or how are we going to work with the developers or whoever the owners are going to be?
So I think that can be written into an agreement. I'm looking at our attorney right now, if that's something that...
Of course, any buyer of the property will take title to the property, subject to the existing lease agreements in place. And they'll be required to honor all lease agreements that are in existence, not in default, have not lapsed, or otherwise terminated prior to the date of closing. That would be a condition for acquisition of the project.
And Councilwoman Jackson, your comment from a previous meeting about the tenants that were displaced, I think that's also something that we can look at, you know, knowing that there are six units that are unoccupied currently. If those folks are interested in coming back and, you know, are in good standing, that we should offer them the opportunity to come back.
Oh, okay.
If they so choose.
Yeah, thank you. That's really what I, not only the six people, but the people that are already in the units, you know, keeping, are they going to be able to stay? And if you put that in the agreement, then I'll agree with it. You know, I just want to make sure those people are not displaced. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Any other questions or comments?
None.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion then. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye. The vote is passed by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you.
I want to entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3105.
Still moved?
Second.
Mr. Boda, who was, could you help me?
Ms. Jackson.
Ms. Jackson, that's what I thought. Okay. Ms. Jackson seconded. Ms. Glanz?
Good evening, Council. Good to be with you again tonight. Before you is Resolution Number 3105, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury proposing the annexation to the City of Salisbury of certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limit of the City of Salisbury to be known as East Lincoln Avenue M&amp;L Reynolds LLP Annexation, beginning for the same point at a corner of existing corporate limits line of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, being near the northerly right-of-way of East Lincoln Avenue and also being near the southwesterly corner of the land of M&amp;L Reynolds LLP, being known as Lot A, containing .245 acres more or less. Whereas, City of Salisbury has received a petition for annexation dated May 7, 2019, signed by at least 25% of persons who are registered, resident, registered voters, and of persons who are owners of at least 25% of the assessed valuation of real property in the area sought to be annexed, binding upon the corporate limit of City of Salisbury to be known as East Lincoln Avenue M&amp;L Reynolds LLP Annexation, beginning for the same point on the westerly side of South Division Street. Said point beginning for the same period at a corner of the existing corporate limits line of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, being near the northerly right-of-way line of East Lincoln Avenue, continuing around the perimeter of the affected property to the point of beginning, being all that real property identified as map 0048, parcel 0242, and further being the same real property more particularly described in Exhibit A1, attached here too, and incorporated herein. And whereas, City of Salisbury has caused to be made a certification of the signatures on said petition for annexation, and the City of Salisbury has verified that the person signing the petition represents at least 25% of the persons who are eligible voters and property owners owning 25% of the assessed valuation of real property in the area to be annexed, all as of March 13, 2020, as set forth in the certification by Leslie C. Sherrill, Surveyor of the City of Salisbury, attached here too and incorporated by reference herein. And whereas, it appears that the aforementioned petition of annexation dated May 7, 2019 meets all the requirements of applicable state law and local law. And whereas, pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government 4-406, a public hearing on this resolution provided by the City of Salisbury's annexation of annexed property as set forth herein shall be and hereby is scheduled for September 27, 2021, at 6:00 p.m.
Is there more to that, or no?
That's usually where I stop.
We have to read the sections? The other sections? No? Okay.
I read more than I usually read because there was a date that had to be read out loud.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. I'll now call the, first of all, any questions or comments?
None. No.
Ms. Jackson?
None.
Okay. I'll call the motion then. All those in favor of Resolution Number 3105, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Resolution 3105 is passed by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 3106.
Still moved?
Ms. Jackson, I'll give Ms. Jackson the initial, and I'll give Ms. Blake the second.
Resolution Number 3106, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury proposing the annexation of the City of Salisbury of certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limit of the City of Salisbury to be known as East Lincoln Avenue M&amp;L Reynolds LLP Annexation, beginning for the same point at a corner of the existing corporate limits line of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, being near the northerly right-of-way line of East Lincoln Avenue and also being near the southwesterly corner of the land of M&amp;L Reynolds LLP, being known as Lot A, containing .245 acres more or less. Whereas, pursuant to that certain petition for annexation dated May 7, 2019, the City of Salisbury is, I think there's a typo there on Slide 13, Salisbury proposes the annexation of that certain lot and parcel of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limit of the City of Salisbury, beginning for the same point, being near the northerly right-of-way of East Lincoln Avenue and also being near the southwesterly corner of the lands of M&amp;L Reynolds LLP, being all that real property identified as map 0048, parcel 0242, and further being the same real property more particularly described in Exhibit A, attached here too, and incorporated herein. And whereas, pursuant to Maryland Local Government Code 4-415, the City of Salisbury is required to adopt an annexation plan for the proposed annexation of annexation property. And whereas, pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government 4-406, a public hearing on this resolution providing for the City, the Council of the City of Salisbury's approval of the annexation plan for the City of Salisbury's annexation of the annexed property as set forth herein shall be and hereby is now scheduled for September 7, 2021, at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 3106, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Resolution 3106 is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 3118.
Still moved?
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory. Ms. Glanz?
Resolution Number 3118, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland to establish a park amenity donation and tree planting donation policy. Whereas, Resolution Number 611, a policy on acceptance of gifts by the city guides the city's acceptance of donations. And whereas, Resolution Number 2206, a policy for donation of items for the city park, has permitted donations of benches and trees in the city park since 2012. And whereas, the city desires to update this policy for all parks and recreation areas and expand it to additional amenities, including fixtures and trees. And whereas, the city desires to offer the community the ability to memorialize or commemorate a loved one, organization, or special event through the purchase of park amenities while covering future maintenance costs. And whereas, the city wishes to streamline the process for accepting donations of the park amenities from citizens of Salisbury and persons desiring to memorialize a loved one, organization, or special event. And whereas, the City of Salisbury as a Tree City, USA community recognizes the value of planting trees in our community. And whereas, in 2020, the city undertook a comprehensive tree canopy study and analyzed the city's tree canopy percentage. And whereas, the city desires to maintain and increase the city's tree canopy. And whereas, the city wishes to streamline the process for accepting tree donations from community groups, nonprofits, and businesses in order to protect the city's urban tree canopy and increase biodiversity in all city parks and public spaces. And whereas, the park amenity donation and tree planting donation is attached here too. And whereas, the mayor or Director of Infrastructure and Development Department may revise or update the policy as needed to meet the needs of the park facilities.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
I just think it's, this is a good update to the existing policy and really good at streamlining everything.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Hearing no others, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 3118, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Resolution Number 3118 is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 3119.
Still moved?
Second.
Mr. Boda, Mrs. Gregory. Ms. Glanz?
Resolution Number 3119, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury to appoint Rena Patel Esquire of the Law Office of Mary Ann Beatty as Special Counsel for the City of Salisbury. Whereas, Section SC 9-1 of the Charter of the City of Salisbury provides, in pertinent part, "There shall be a Department of Law headed by the city solicitor. The city solicitor and any assistant city solicitor shall be appointed by and serve at the pleasure of the mayor and the majority of full council." Whereas, effective April 2, 2021, Cocky Brandon Maloney, PC, has been named the city solicitor for the City of Salisbury. And whereas, the administration, with the approval of the Salisbury City Council, desires to appoint Special Counsel to advise the city and provide legal representation for and on behalf of the city with respect to any matters and/or disputes that arise when there is a conflict of interest with Cocky Brandon Maloney, PC.
Ms. Glanz? Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 3119, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye. The Resolution Number 3119 is approved by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Ms. Glanz.
You're welcome.
I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2677 for the first reading.
Still moved?
Ms. Jackson? And I think I heard Ms. Blake.
Yes.
That's almost harmony.
Uh-huh.
Good evening, Mr. Sullivan.
Good evening, Mr. President. Good evening, members of the council. Ordinance Number 2677, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the City of Salisbury's capital project fund budget to reallocate funding for projects in the FY 2014 bond pool. Whereas, Ordinance Number 2273 authorized the City of Salisbury to sell bonds in FY 2014, which appropriated funds for various capital projects undertaken by the city. And whereas, the FY 2014 bond pool includes funding for the Cotty Cox Flood Relief Project and funding for the Main Street Master Plan Project. And whereas, the Department of Infrastructure and Development has determined the remaining funds originally allocated for the Cotty Cox Flood Relief Project are no longer required for purposes of such project. And whereas, City DID has requested that the remaining funds originally allocated for the Cotty Cox Flood Relief Project and, in addition there too, the interest remaining in the FY 2014 bond pool be reallocated to the Main Street Master Plan Project for the purpose of funding certain costs associated with the completion of such capital project. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, the City of Salisbury's capital projects fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. There is a chart setting forth, the amendments made to the City of Salisbury's capital projects fund budget set forth in the text of the, of Ordinance Number 2677. And be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 2 is the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all provisions herein. Section 3 is further the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 4, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section 4. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments?
The only thing I'd like to say is that Mr. Cordery has done a great job over the last couple of years, making sure that our bond pool is cleaned up. And this is another example of doing that, so that we can be assured that the bonds, bond funding is done accordingly and meets our needs. And this is another good example. So thank, Mr. Cordery, thank you for, to you and your team for that. There's no other comments, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2677 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2677 for the first reading is passed by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2678 for the first reading.
Still moved?
Second.
Mr. Boda, Mrs. Gregory. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance Number 2678, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $2,000, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for the Salisbury Wycomco Integrated First Care Team. The Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore has a mini grant program. Whereas, the purpose of the grant program is to benefit organizations that serve health and human services, education, arts and culture, community development, environment, and historical preservation. Whereas, the City of Salisbury submitted a grant application to CFEs for funding to support the Salisbury Wycomco Integrated First Care Team. And whereas, CFEs has awarded the city funds in the amount of $2,000. Whereas, the City of Salisbury must enter into a grant agreement with CFEs defining how these funds must be expended. Whereas, all funds shall be used to provide medical transportation for SWIFT patients who are otherwise unable to attend necessary medical appointments and meetings. Whereas, Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the Council of the City of Salisbury. Whereas, appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval forfeits of the Council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, Mayor Jacob Arday is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the, excuse me, with the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore on behalf of the City of Salisbury for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $2,000. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 2, the City of Salisbury's grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows. Increase CFEs revenue account number 10500-426100-XXX by $2,000. Increase SWIFT operating expense account number 10500-546006-XXX by $2,000. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 3 is the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all their provisions herein. Section 4 is further the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all their provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 5, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section 5. Section 6, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments?
I would just like to thank the Community Foundation and also say that the SWIFT program has been effective, and we look forward to its continuation.
I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2678 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2678, the first reading, is passed by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2679 for the first reading.
Still moved?
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance Number 2679, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $2,000, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for the printing publication of a book of poems written by local poets. Whereas, the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore has the Albert J. Bailey Wycomco County Fund Grant Program. Whereas, the purpose of the grant program is to provide funding for projects that represent and serve the residents of Wycomco County, Maryland. Whereas, the City of Salisbury and the poet laureate of Salisbury submitted a grant application to CFEs for funding to support the publication of Written on the Wycomco, an anthology of poems written by Wycomco County poets. And whereas, the CFEs has awarded the city funds in the amount of $2,000. Whereas, the City of Salisbury must enter into a grant agreement with CFEs defining how these funds must be expended. And whereas, all funds shall be used for the publication printing of the Written on the Wycomco Poetry Book. Whereas, Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the Council of the City of Salisbury. Whereas, appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval forfeits of the Council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, Mayor Jacob Arday is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore on behalf of the City of Salisbury for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $2,000. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 2, the City of Salisbury's grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows. Increase CFEs revenue account number 10500-426100-XXX by $2,000. Increase operating expense account number 10500-546006-XXX by $2,000. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 3 is the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all their provisions herein. Section 4, it is further the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all their provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 5, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section 5. Section 6, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments?
Looking forward to your poem that's going to be in the book.
I was just going to say.
I knew you were going to do that. Yes, my poem will, I've been told my poem will be in there.
Yes.
I think we should change the thing, though, because it says poets and...
Well, yours is by interpretive dance, right?
Moving right along.
Can't wait for the book signing when Nancy comes back, and you'll have to read, Mr. President.
I think we're ready to call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2679 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2679 for the first reading passes by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2680 for the first reading.
Still moved?
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance Number 2680, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland to eliminate parking meters on Broad Street. Whereas, the City of Salisbury desires to remove unnecessary and outdated parking meters in low-traffic areas. Whereas, the Salisbury Charter, Section 11-2, gives the city charge of all public ways in the city. Whereas, removal of parking meters will not impact the normal revenue intake from parking payments. And whereas, parking on Broad Street is still encouraged in order to bring businesses' revenue in the area. And now therefore, be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland that... And now therefore, be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that for the purposes and reasons here and above set forth, that removal of the parking meters on Broad Street is hereby approved. Be it further enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that this ordinance shall take effect upon its final passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments?
None.
I do have one question, which I failed to ask the other day. Do we have to surplus these things?
Oh, yeah.
Sure. Sorry, I should have asked the other day.
Per the surplus requirements in the code, if something has a historical cost of $2,000 or more, we would take them through the surplus process.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, I will now call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2680 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the Chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2680 is approved by a count of five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
I will now open the floor for public comments, if there's anyone like to speak. Okay, I see none. Administration, and we'll do administration comments first. Ms. Glantz?
Well, the Folk Festival is continually getting close. We had a briefing from our fire chief this morning at our staff meeting, just invite the public to volunteer in areas of most need, our site setup and breakdown, and first aid. So you can go to the United Way website and sign up there. I think that's all I have.
We have an orientation for those next, or the eighth?
Yeah, I think the Wednesday before.
Yeah, the Wednesday before.
Yeah.
So we have a orientation. Council members, Mr. Boda.
Well, I'd like to welcome my niece Mariela. Con su esposo, Ernesto, they are from Spain, visiting us this week. They actually went to Peru, and then now they're here. Also, my niece Rosemary McKittrick, if you want to stand up, Rosemary. So on July 14, Rosemary became a U.S. citizen.
Oh, wow.
And my wife Bridget's back there. Hey, babe.
Hi, Bridget. Thank you very much. Ms. Blake?
A couple things. I was gonna say, make sure you sign up to volunteer for the Folk Festival. That's, that was already brought up. I do want to remind people a couple of things. Please, please be very mindful when you're on our streets and yield to our first responders, all ambulance, fire trucks, police officers, any city employees. I've seen several close and very interesting scenarios, and just please be, you know, don't cause another emergency. Remember that soon we'll have our buses on our streets because we are going back to school right after Labor Day, so please be careful of the buses. Today, it was announced that we are in a, the blood bank of Del Marva is in a state of emergency. I think they have like two and a half days' worth of like, just O positive blood, and usually they have that, at least that amount, usually with all blood types. So please donate blood. Right here on Mount Hermin, it's 888-825-6638. Please donate blood.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
I just want to say a happy anniversary to Mr. Jack and Mrs. Lee. Fifty-two years is a long, long time, Jack, so I can only imagine your age. It's like... I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, Jack. And I'm really happy for you, and I hope you continue to have many more blessed years.
Thank you, April.
But I just, I had to put some humor in it. But I just want to remind people to get your vaccines. I will constantly say it, I'm home today because I've been coughing, I've been tested, but I'm, I don't have COVID, but just be, just get tested. And before you get your vaccine, make sure you get tested before you get your vaccine to make it even safer for you. Because I hear people say things as, as, well, somebody had COVID, they had the vaccine and they had COVID, and they have COVID, or they got sick from the vaccine or whatever. If you know like I know, and have been in my shoes, and I know some of you have, I would prefer having the vaccine as petrified as I am of needles. If I could get it, anybody could get it, please get vaccinated, because I'm gonna tell you, it's nothing worse than having, having COVID. So I will say it one time, I'll say it a million times. Be cautious, be safe, wear your mask. If you're not, if you haven't gotten a vaccination, please wear your mask. Please wear them. And even if you have been vaccinated in certain places you go, you need to wear your mask. And I just, I will continue to say it until COVID is no more. So everybody have a great evening, be blessed, and just be safe.
Thank you, April. Michelle?
Well, April kind of already talked about it with the COVID stuff, but I do want to say, point out that we have 41 hospitalized in Title Health right now, 41 people in the ICU. And when I, when we were in the ICU back in November, that was about how many they had on a regular basis. And I can only imagine how hard those healthcare workers are working right now to keep people safe and keep people alive. And overwhelmingly, the number of people being hospitalized across the country are unvaccinated. Please, please, please get the vaccine, because it, even if you do contract COVID-19, it will not be nearly as severe, and you will survive if you have the vaccine. So, so please go get it. The Pfizer vaccine was approved today by the FDA. No more excuses. Go get it done.
Thank you. Ms. Glantz?
Mr. President, just a point of clarification. I think there's 41 COVID-positive patients in the hospital, there's nine in the ICU. Just want to make sure I've got the accurate information out there. But still more than we've had in this, in this wave.
Yes, and I was going to say as well, the CDC has approved it for general use, not emergency use. So there shouldn't be any excuses now. We need to get vaccinated. I'm tired of reading about four-month-olds, four-month-olds in Florida and three-day-olds, not three-day, but three-year-old children dying of COVID. That's totally unacceptable to me. So please do your part. I wish everybody a good time. I'd like to wish my wife a happy anniversary, love of my life, and have a great week, and we'll see you next Monday. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.